Sandy and I wanted to talk a minute about the General Assembly. Sandy's prepared to talk a little bit about what they accomplished and didn't accomplish last year. I'm going to talk a little bit about what's coming up. The General Assembly started yesterday. And then, we wanted to highlight the importance of the census this year. Sandy's working very hard on this, and she's going to take just a little bit of time to talk about that.
Thank you, Nancy. The first one I want to mention is the most important one of all. Thank you, Joanne Paulson. It's the Earned Income Tax Credit. And I will make an attempt to explain it in a way that makes this understandable. The Earned Income Tax Credit is a federal bill, a federal law. And what it does is it provides a tax credit for people who earn low income based on the number of children in the family. So generally, based on my experience when I was with Habitat, they always paid off their mortgage when they got their earned income tax credit from the feds. The credit can amount... What it means is that if you earn, say you earn, I don't know, $20,000, and you pay $8,000 in taxes, that's just off the top of my head. It's just a, for example, and those aren't good numbers. But anyway, then you would get back, say, $5,000 because you have six kids. It's all written up in the federal government language. So what happens in Delaware is our current law provides a 20% tax credit based on the amount of the federal credit. And so people from Delaware who are low income, who earn, who get the earned income tax credit from the feds, get 20% of that amount themselves. The problem with that is that a lot of people earn such a small amount of money that they don't pay any taxes. So if they don't pay any taxes, they don't get anything back. So what our, this bill would do, it's HB 80, which was approved by the House and the Senate in 2018. And the governor vetoed it in October. After the General Assembly left in June, it was a big shock. But he had several reasons he claimed were why he did it. But anyway, so now the bill apparently has been fixed to satisfy his concerns. And it is expected to pass in 2020. And I can't tell you exactly what it does, but, I mean, how it does it. But it will allow people who get a federal tax credit to get a percentage of that, even if they didn't pay any taxes. They would get an amount back anyway.
They didn't pay Delaware taxes?
It's federal, this is federal. In other words, if they paid federal taxes, they would get a credit of that amount back, a certain amount that the feds allow.
It's taken out of your salary.
Based on the people, I'm sorry?
You're saying they get a refund on no taxes paid?
Yes, yes. Because, let me explain it. The people that don't get any money are the poorest of the poor. And the reason that they don't get any, they don't get any back is because they already pay any, because they're so poor. They don't make enough money to pay taxes. So they will get back a small amount based on how much they're allowed to get back from the feds. Now, this is the most significant way to help low-income individuals. It means more to them than minimum wage or any other form of assistance for low-income people. It's very significant. And this is going to pass this year, we believe. And we'll keep you up to date in the future. Did I explain it so you can sort of understand it?
No.
I'm sorry. What don't you understand?
So if they're not paying any taxes at all...
Yeah.
They're not paying, they're paying, I suppose they're paying their social security.
Oh yeah, yeah, we're talking about income taxes.
Okay, so, all right, so that's, that, in essence, is a tax to them. So, but you're talking about income tax. So in essence, what they're doing is getting a percentage back of the, of the money that was taken out of their salary?
Yeah, with health tax.
That's right, that's right.
And your Medicare payment, in essence?
But some people, some people, wait a minute. Some people are so poor that they don't have to pay taxes. So they get money back anyway based on a certain percentage of the federal allowance for the tax credit.
So they're just going to get more now?
I'm sorry?
They're just going to get more back now?
They're going to get some from the state. Right now, they don't get anything from the state because they have to, they have to have paid taxes in order to be eligible to get something back. And if they don't pay any taxes, then they will get something back anyway based on a percentage. It's going to be a few hundred dollars. It's not, I mean, we're not going to be giving them $1,000 like a certain candidate wants to do. Okay?
I work for them, so if anybody doesn't IRS, if anybody doesn't understand...
Okay, go see her afterwards if you don't understand it, because she works for IRS.
Not anymore, thank you.
No, she used to. Okay. The other one I wanted to mention is the Minimum Wage Bill. This is SB 105, and it was, it was unable to get out of the Senate Labor Committee. Whenever there's a Minimum Wage Bill, the local chambers of commerce, including ours, gets all the business people to go up to Dover and crowd the room so that other people can't even get in the room. And they claim that it's going to put people out of business and all. So it couldn't get out of the Senate Labor Committee. But there will be an effort to get it through this year. I don't know if it'll be successful. It's very difficult. But the good news is that as of October 1st, the minimum wage in Delaware is now up to $9.75, which is higher than the federal level. And when that bill was passed a couple of years ago, they, the Republicans held things up at the last minute on June 30th until they could get what is called a youth rate and a training rate. And that is 50 cents less than whatever the minimum wage is. So right now, it would be $9.25. And that applies to young people between the ages of 14 and 17, and also adult workers during the first six months of their new job. Then after that, they give to the regular. Any questions about that one? Oh, okay, thank you. A national popular vote was enacted on March 28th, which means that our electors, after the presidential election, will be required to vote in the Electoral College for whoever has the most popular votes at the national level. And as soon as there's enough states that do this to get to the number of people it requires for a presidential election, then the popular vote will determine who is elected instead of who wins the most states with the most electoral votes. And that's not expected to happen this time around. But hopefully, it'll pass the next, by the next, enough states will do it by the next time. Now, there were several voting bills that we were watching. One was early voting. That bill was signed by the governor on June 30th. So starting in 2022, we will be allowed to, we will be required to have early voting for 10 days before the election, including the Saturday and Sunday before the election. So people will be able to go early in case they might get sick later or whatever, where they can't get there on Election Day. There's a, there's a really important bill, and that's absentee voting. Our constitutional amendment has restrictions in it on what, you know, your problems that you have to have in order to be eligible to get an absentee ballot. And by the way, some people don't pay attention to that. But anyway, it needs a constitutional amendment. And the bill, HB 73, was the first leg of a constitutional amendment that passed the House in April. But it failed in the Senate. We couldn't get, it requires an extraordinary majority. And right now, we think we have enough votes. We needed two or three Republicans to vote for it to get it through. And Kathy Cludier, from up north, has told us that she has somebody that's willing to vote so that we can get it through, but she won't tell us who it is. So we'll see. Anyway, so what this means is that to get a constitutional amendment, you have to pass a bill once, and then you have to wait till there's an election. And then after that election, you have to vote on it again. So if it passes this year, that means they can do it next year, and then we would be able, it would apply by 2022, hopefully. Otherwise, we're going to have to wait for a while. There was a bill, HB 175, to vote by mail. It turns out that, you know, they just bought new voting machines, and they spent millions of dollars. And so apparently, supposedly, it would cost very much money to have voting by mail because they would need some more machines to process everything. So anyway, there's not going to, there's, that bill is not expected to be enacted. However, there is a bill, there is a bill is expected to be introduced that would allow, or would allow for mail by vote, is vote by mail, excuse me, for school board elections, which personally, I think would be terrific because you have such poor turnout for school board elections that this would really encourage people to vote in school board elections. And that, that could make a huge difference. Those are all the bills that I think I was supposed to, oh, gun safety. There were three bills, SB 68, 70, and 82 on gun safety. Senator Townsend's bill would have banned, you know, the big guns.
Assault weapons.
Assault weapons. I'm sorry, I haven't seen your memory slightly. And then 70 would, was Senator Sikola. And his would have banned the things he'd sink in the machine to make it...
Bump stop?
Yeah, bump stop. Thank you. And 82 would have required a, that was Senator Lara.
Sturgeon.
Sturgeon, right, thank you. Hey, you guys are great. Sturgeon's bill would have required that you get a permit if you wanted to buy a gun. And those three bills went to the Senate Elections, or Admins Executive Committee because they wanted, that's the leadership, and they figured if they put it there, it would go through. But in the meantime, the gun lobby attracted a whole bunch of labor members, union members. And so everybody got worried about getting campaign contributions from the unions. And they killed the bill in the Senate Executive Committee, all three of those bills. Now, at least Laura Sturgeon has said she's planning to push harder for her bill. And presumably, the others will too, but I don't know for sure. So we'll have to wait and see about that. There was one other bill that is on this list, that SB 71, which controls prescription prices. And, you know, there's some kind of a middleman, middle person, middle organization that...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. And they sort of set prices for prescription drugs. And then somehow, it gets collected and provided to somebody in the middle in between. And what I learned about this, I went to the pharmacy because it turns out that certain drugs are less expensive than using your insurance. So if you, if you use your insurance, this thing applies. And if you don't use your insurance, sometimes it's less expensive. So whenever you get a drug, you might want to check with the pharmacist to make sure that it's less expensive to buy it with your insurance than without your insurance. But anyway, they passed a bill last time, last year, to try to deal with this issue. And now there's another, this other bill will go further in trying to fix this issue to reduce drug prices. Did that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, great. Okay. That's all that I have on my list to talk about, unless somebody has questions about any others. But I'll let Nancy talk first.
Yes.
One question. When you were talking about being able to vote 10 days earlier, are they going to put out voting stations, or you have to go to the, like Georgetown address?
There's a requirement in the bill that there be at least one voting place in every county plus the city of Wilmington. They may have more, but they're required to have. So you'll be able to go to Georgetown, but there may be more depending on how much pressure they get from people like us to have more locations.
I can tell you from my personal experience of watching my mother, Iowa had early voting. She could go on a day when she could find a place to park. She didn't have to stand in line. And she would have been there anyway, but it was so much easier for her. She was 88 and still voting. So this is a big deal. It also makes a difference for people who can't take off work so they could vote on Saturday or Sunday rather than having to figure out how to do a little bit more things. So this is an important piece of getting the vote out. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about what people are anticipating in terms of the issues that are going to take most of the legislature's time and or the most noise. It may be a combination of those two. The first one on the list is the budget. The General Assembly will be, once again, deciding on the budget. The second issue that Sandy has alluded to is gun safety, or guns. The third one is criminal justice. And the newspapers, at least, are lumping into this the possibility that the death penalty will be reinstated, the death penalty will be introduced. And also some legislation on the legalization of marijuana and/or making the medical marijuana easier to access. Education will be the fourth major area, and the minimum wage, the fifth one. These are areas that, and the last one, sorry, one more, is the voting issues, continuing to make it easier to vote in Delaware. The News Journal did a poll, and they did a whole lot better getting their people to respond than I did getting the Alliance. I only had 15 responses, so I'm not considering that to be a very representative sample. So this is the News Journal's list of what people are most interested in among their readers and the people who obviously self-selected to respond to this. Guns, minimum wage, medically assisted suicide, the marijuana, the two marijuana bills were four in five. The death penalty was six. Restrictions on abortion was seven. Paper shopping bags were eight. And the ability of the school boards to tax without a reference, a reference to the public was nine. So that gives you an idea of where sort of public is versus what the people in the legislature are anticipating for the key areas. We prepared a short cheat sheet. There are over 1,000 bills that are pending or have introduced or in the process of being introduced. This was an attempt to look at the ones that we know of that particularly are of interest to the Alliance. I encourage you to use the reference, which is at the very bottom. This is a very, very useful tool. It's called Legiscan. You can put a topic in, you can put a bill number in, you can do a variety of ways to search. And it gives you a copy of the bill, it gives you who's sponsoring it, where it is in the system. And it's a public service, as far as I can tell. I can't find the sponsor on it. But it looks to be legitimate. It's doing this for all 50 states. And there's also a comparison of what's Delaware doing and Pennsylvania's not doing, or vice versa, on a particular issue. So it's a very, very useful tool, and I found it very easy to use. So I encourage you, if you're interested in these things, to use that tool. I hadn't anticipated that the ACLU was going to do all of the criminal justice bills tonight. I'm going to very quickly go through what I can tell you about these ones that are at the top. Sandy's done a few of them, so we don't have to do this. The Civil Citation Program is a very important program that has kept juveniles from being charged with criminal charges. It keeps them out of the court system. It would mean eventually our expenditure program would no longer be needed. Obviously, this is not for major felonies and for violent crimes. But for the smaller ones, if the young people comply with conditions that they're in school, they're behaving themselves, they don't get arrested again, their record is not in the criminal justice system. It's kept in the courthouse until they comply. Sentencing reform was started last year. This is a look at trying to decide whether some of the more minor non-violent crimes require the prison sentences or the mandatory minimums. Reentry reforms, this is looking at how to help people prepare for reentry after they've been in prison. It's looking at funding reentry programs in the state. And it is looking at the licensing requirements. There are many, many occupations in the state of Delaware for which you have to have a license. And many of them have a provision that requires you to have no criminal record. Some of those are more than legitimate, in my opinion. If you're a school teacher, you don't want a child predator getting a teacher license or those kinds of things. But a lot of them have no relation to what the criminal record was. HB 10 is no prosecutions for children that are under 12. There would be special provisions if they committed violent crimes. We talked a little bit about the death penalty and possibilities that Representative Schmick may reintroduce his bill from last year. It's states, it's still there. There is a bill proposing that for children who are under 18 months and their mothers are in prison, there would be a nursery for them in the prison. After 18 months, then they would not be part of the prison. Bail reform, some of the provisions from bail reform require constitutional amendments. 151, I think I have this right, 151 is the one that institutes the reforms. 152 takes them back. So they're on opposite sides of each other. There are bills or there are laws in the state of Delaware that require people to lose their driver's license, other licenses if they have not paid fines. This would address some of that, some of the circle that we've talked about in the past where if you don't have a driver's license, it's very hard to get to your job. If you don't have a job, you can't pay a fine. If you don't pay a fine, you can't get a driver's license. So you get this circle of people not able to get out of it. Criminal code reform, this, we had a presentation a couple of years ago by the Chief Judge, the Chief Justice. These are efforts to implement some of the suggestions that were made under his commission. I have to admit, I don't know about the rules for confessions. It has nothing to do with priests. It has to do with confessing to the police. There are some other areas that we thought were important for the Alliance to track, the absentee voting, the earned income tax credit. And I am not even going to begin to try to explain it. Voting by mail, gun safety, the prescription prices. There is a, there are a couple of bills that deal with civil rights. One, creating an office in the state government. And one would take the blank on a marriage license that indicates what your race is. And it would take that off of the marriage license. And then the minimum wage. Those are among the things that we anticipate. I'm in the process of trying to do a less complete Excel spreadsheet than Sandy has done in the past, which had an enormous amount of detail, making it particularly for these bills that we've highlighted of where they are in the process and whether the Alliance supports or opposes these bills. I would welcome, if you know of bills, come up to me afterwards or send me an email, send Calvin an email on the Facebook page that say, you know, you should be looking at SB number such and such, which deals with this topic. I would appreciate that because I obviously haven't looked at all 1,000 bills. And I'm not going to. The other thing that we're looking for on the Advocacy Committee, and there are a number of us here tonight, is assistance in both tracking the bills as well as if you're willing to go up to Dover and to advocate on behalf of the Alliance, either for or against these bills. Bruce Bolander did an excellent job. Sandy and Charlotte are our other lobbyists, and they were very effective last year. So we are looking for additional people that would be willing to do that. You do have to register, and you do have to report every quarter? Quarterly, otherwise you get fined.
It's very simple, takes two minutes.
And you could lose your driver's license if you don't pay the fine. Before we open it up to questions, Sandy's going to talk just a few minutes about the census and why it is such a key issue this year.
Thank you. So every 10 years, as you know, the Census Bureau is supposed, is required by law to count every person who lives in the United States. And the big issue this year has been whether they're going to have a citizenship question on it, and they are not. And a lot of people are very worried about that because they don't trust the government. But I can tell you that anybody who, anybody who's working on the census as a federal employee can be fined $5,000 and spend five years in jail if they release any information about people that they talk to or find out information from during the census process. So it's, it's a very, very strict requirement for secrecy and privatization, whatever. So try to convince people, it's not easy, but try to convince people that they really, really, really should respond to the census. You will all be getting, well, you should all be getting a thing in the mail starting in mid-March, asking you to respond to the census as to where you live or will be living as of April 1st. Anybody who resides at that particular address is supposed to be reported, even if they're not related, doesn't really matter, anybody that lives there. And this year, for the first time, there's a third option, that you can register by mail, responding to this form that you will get in the mail. Or you could telephone the Census Bureau, which, you know, I imagine, long waits, waiting for somebody to come on. Or you could do it digitally. And they're encouraging as many people as possible to do it digitally because that's the least labor-intensive and the, and the most responsible to us taxpayers because it doesn't cost as much as sending people out to try to get you. So all the libraries in the state will have computers that they will be able to help you or tell you how to use the computer to respond. At the mornings, where Jane Lord and I live, we have a little group, and we're going to try to help everybody that isn't computer literate to do so. We'll have laptops and let them do it. And if you want us to come somewhere else, we'll probably do it. Because it's really, really important. The most important region, reason is that the federal government spends about $675 billion every year in grants and things of that type. And this is for all kinds of things from, well, I'll just give it off the top of my head. It would include highways, it includes schools, it includes SNAP, it includes school lunches, it includes assistance for people with disabilities, seniors, all kinds of, any federal program you can imagine comes back to the state based on the census, based on how many people we have in our state. Now, apparently, the last time around in 2010, 5,000 people in Delaware were not counted. I don't know how they do that, but they figured it out. They have addresses, and they have satellites that were looking down to see new places that were being built so they could figure out new addresses. I mean, they're very sophisticated about how they're doing this. I mean, they're very sophisticated about how they're doing this. So anyway, five thousand people did not respond, and so each person was worth two thousand dollars a year in grants and so on to the state. So as a result of those five thousand people not being counted, we lost ten million dollars a year. That, over the decade, that was a hundred million dollars that we are having to pay in taxes because we didn't count everybody. So help us count everybody so that we don't have to pay for funds that the feds should be paying for with all their grants. And also, I just wanted to mention that they are still recruiting people, and just about anybody can apply. You have to be a citizen, and they do do some kind of a search to make sure you're not a criminal. But aside from that, anybody that's eligible, and they are paying between nineteen fifty and twenty-one fifty an hour here in the area, so it's worth it. I mean, I already applied.
To do what?
To work.
To do?
To work for the Census Bureau as a federal employee, and they have a lot of different kinds of jobs, but the primary one would be the numerators. So after the census is completed, and I'll get you in a minute, Ann, after the census is completed, they will be sending people out to your home to find you and try to get you to respond to the census if you don't respond by a certain date in April. And so they need people that will do that. And they try to send people who will be not threatening to the neighborhoods in which they send you. So assume that you would be going to a neighborhood where people would trust you, and that makes it feel safe. In any case, so that's, it's a great job, I mean, you know, and it's part-time. You can, I already did it, so you can tell them how many hours a week you're available and see what happens. So I would encourage people to apply. All you do is go to census.gov on the internet, and it's very obvious right there what the click to get into the online application form. Ann had a question, and then I'll go to you.
Would you mention, because I don't know if I'm here, but I'm sure I'm not the only one who received it, because of the way the administration is now and how skeptical I am, I don't trust them, I received a pre-survey card to fill out. Did anybody else receive that right here, me and you did? Because I didn't trust it.
Really?
When investigated, and according to what I could find, it was legitimate. And I wasn't going to fill it out. And then it came, they came back to me again, they said, we sent you this form, you must fill it out. And it asked about the people living in the house, it wanted all this personal information, and you had to submit it or there was going to be some huge fine. Do you know anything about it?
No, I never heard anything about that. It sounds like a scam to me.
Well, I thought it was a scam, but it turns out, I really investigated it, and it wasn't a scam.
Well, I don't know. How did you determine, how did you determine that that was not a scam?
Well, there were a couple of places that it directed me to go.
Oh, okay.
No, no, it was a government, it was a government thing. It wasn't, honestly, it really wasn't, I'm not scammed on any.
There are no fines for not doing the census.
I just don't trust it, Ann, I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't trust it either. So I'm just wondering if anybody else.
Well, apparently, there's three people here that received something like this, and I would say that it sounds like a scam to me. And I did read somewhere that there are scams going on.
My understanding is that they're verifying addresses. That's the first step, is to verify addresses. They're not, to my knowledge, either, because they're filling out names and.
Okay, well, if they want your address, then that's all they want, that I would not put any personal information in them if they're verifying addresses. We'll try to look into this, Ann. We've been working with the regional office in Philadelphia, and we'll find out and send some information out about this, because it's very serious, and we don't want any scams, or we don't want you to be responding to scams. But it really does sound like a scam to me, but they may need to verify addresses. There's so many new, I mean, across the street from where I live, they're building ten houses a week. And so I don't even know how they're going to know those addresses by April first, but anyway, that's their problem and our problem, because we want to count those people. Now, you, any question?
Yeah, two questions. One, do, what happens when people are homeless? Because you said where people live.
Yeah, let me answer that one, and then I'll get back to you. Okay, I was actually on a press conference they had this morning, and that question came up from one of the reporters. And they're actually sending people under bridges and so on. In Delaware, we have a complete count commission, and they have been working with the Delaware Housing Group. And they did a survey of the homeless in January, and they have identified a number of places where the homeless hang out, and they're going to go there, and they're finding people that will go there. So that would be one of the kind of jobs that maybe a volunteer could do if they wanted to, if they were comfortable doing that. But they are, they have plans, they're working on it, and their plans are to go under bridges and tunnels and places where homeless people hang out, because, or if they're in, if they go to a group home, they can count that location as their home if they spend nights there and so on. But they're very aware of that issue, and they are working on it, yeah.
My second question is, I know that Delaware only has one representative in Congress, and I understand that we have like one of the highest ratios of people to representative. How close are we census-wise to perhaps getting a second representative? And would that, would that happen with this?
Thank you for that question. Last time around, we had nine hundred and forty-seven thousand people, approximately. It required a million dollar, a million people to get a second representative in Congress, and so we didn't make it. But there's two things that are happening this year that makes me think it's a possibility, although some people don't think it's appropriate to talk about it, but anyway, I do. What happens is, first of all, we're still growing. Like I said, across the street from me, they're building ten houses a week, and it's just, you know, our growth, you all know, we're growing like crazy, it's ridiculous. And so our population is growing, so it may, it may come up to a million this time. But other states are also growing, and the population is growing everywhere, so that doesn't necessarily mean we would get another representative. The other thing that's happening, though, is there's several red states that do not have a complete count commission, which the Census Bureau has asked every state to create that's working very hard to develop local partners and do all kinds of things to ensure a complete count. So it's possible that some states won't make a big enough effort to count everybody, and so they're liable to lose. In fact, I've already read about, I think California's supposed to lose a representative just based on what we already know, and another state, maybe New York, I'm not sure, but there's a couple of states that are definitely losing a representative. So in my opinion, it's possible, and Senator Harper spoke publicly several months ago, and he made the same statement, that it's a possibility.
I would add to that, this is also the basis on the redistricting for the state legislature. So it's very, very important that we get all of the numbers and we have a, and then, you know, the legislature is held accountable for how they reapportion the seats. But my guess is, as someone relatively new to Delaware, there've been some shifts in the population, and the districts that exist now will not exist after the redistricting. So another reason why this is so important. And as a former Iowan, when I grew up, we had eight representatives. Iowa has four now, and likely to have three, so it can happen.
Yeah. That allows me to bring up one of my hot topics, and that is prison-based gerrymandering. The Census Bureau counts prisoners at the prison. That means, for example, that Senator Enos has several thousand constituents who aren't really voting and aren't really asking him for services, et cetera. So anyway, what's happening this year is, well, actually, ten years ago, the state had a law that required us to count prisoners at their last home address. At the last minute, they figured out that they couldn't get it done in time, so they changed the law and made it apply this time. So I finally found out the name, there's actually a name of a person in the Department of Correction that has the job of finding the last home address of every prisoner that lives in Delaware and is in prison in Delaware. And there is a bill that is supposed to be introduced shortly that will specify exactly who's supposed to, what agency's supposed to do what with what data and how it's supposed to get to the census, and my understanding is, it does have to go back to the census. And the census has announced that for those states that have that law, that it requires us to count prisoners at their last home address, that they will send a separate data set to the legislatures in those states so that we will be able to count prisoners at their last home address. So that will also change some districts in our state. And when we do our redistricting, the data will go to the states on March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, and then the legislature will have from that time until June thirtieth, twenty-one, to redistrict. So it's probably going to affect election districts, and, you know, everything is going to change, and it'll be very interesting to see how that evolves.
How many states do it the way, the first way, where they count the prisoners?
The last time around, Maryland, New York, and I believe one other state did it. This time, there will be at least four and maybe as many as seven states will be counting prisoners at their last home address.
Okay, so most states?
Most states did not.
Okay.
It's much easier to do it.
Yeah, it's much easier. And plus, you know, it's really, it's really wild. I, last time around, I worked on a Sussex County project, we, the legal women voters actually redistricted county council. We drew maps and everything, and we had a great time doing it. They ignored it, of course, but we made us think about it. Anyway, so then I remember there was one state, it could have been Iowa, where in most states, it's not a significant here because of the, because we're so small, but in a lot of states, most states, a lot of criminals come from urban areas, right? But most prisons are in very rural areas. So there was some state that had a county, it was Iowa, she says, where there was something like, there was like a member of Congress that had something like five constituents that weren't in prison. I mean, it's, you know, it wasn't quite that bad. But anyway, that's the kind of thing that can happen.
But it makes a huge difference at the state level. The state representative that represents where the penitentiary is in Iowa has this huge, you know, he has a relatively small district because he has the prison, when in fact, it would be about three times as big if he didn't have a prison.
And I, oh, go ahead.
Many of their addresses were out of state when they.
If they were from out of state, they will be counted here. So they have to be people who have a last home address in Delaware who are in a Delaware prison. We haven't figured out a way to get the data on the people from Delaware that are federal prisoners.
Well, there are also people being held in Pennsylvania that are.
Yeah, that's right.
Why don't we open it up if there are questions about anything we've said tonight? And I know people are anxious to get home for the debate.
Yeah.
Hello. Nancy, you talked about the bail bond system, and I was wondering, where are we in Delaware regarding people who are imprisoned because they cannot pay the bond?
We are still having a tremendous percentage who are there because they can't meet their bond. And I have to tell you, I don't have off the top of my head, but it is a significant, they're called pre-trial detainees. The prison population has a significant, particularly for women, for some reason, there does seem to be a gender difference here. But this is, this is a result of bonds that were set before the reform was. And as you can see, there are some efforts to repeal the reforms that were made last year that took a lot of the citations out from under bond requirements. But it is still, the pre-trial detention, there's also concerns, obviously, that some people need to be in prison before the trial because of the nature of the crimes that they're accused of. And that's part of what's being done in the constitutional amendment, is trying to define those, one rather broad definition, one more narrow. Thank you all for coming out. Please keep Charlotte in mind.